Good evening, I'd like to call to order our December 1st School Committee meeting. And we will start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so our first agenda item is public comment. Are there, is there a public comment or anyone here for public comment?
We have call in public comment?
Right, it's alright, correct, I always forget.
And do you want to identify who's here and who's remote?
Yep, thank you.
Please, that gives me a minute to write down people's phone numbers because I gotta call them in a minute.
Perfect, okay, so we have Mr. McDevitt is remote in our meeting this evening. Ms. Fietzke is here, Mr. Hicks is here, and I am here.
Ms. Picard.
Ms. Picard is here, sorry, Ms. Picard.
The unidentified phone number on the screen is Brian from North Andover Cam who's just monitoring our.
Thank you, and Dr. Gilligan would be able to address who's here?
Sure, Dr. Mealy, Assistant Superintendent. Ms. Marks, Assistant Superintendent, and Marcy Bakuzi, Executive Director of Special Education, and myself, Greg Gilligan.
Okay, and we will start with our call in for public comment.
So we have three people who asked to call in for public comment, and one of them is in the room. So I'll start with the first person who requested a call. This is Rachel Anastasia that I'm calling. This is a new process.
Hello, this is Rachel Anastasia.
Hi Rachel, this is Helen Picard at North Andover Public Schools, and you are here for public comment, you have two minutes.
Thank you so much, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm speaking tonight as a member of the town CPAC, as well as a private taxpaying citizen. A CPAC is a Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Every public school district in Massachusetts is required to establish a CPAC. Massachusetts state law assigns both an adversary advisory and participatory function to CPAC. I speak sincerely on behalf of the CPAC, as well as myself and my family, when I want to express my gratitude to the administration and the school committee for your willingness to participate in a special education audit and your continued commitment to transparency in the process. I also want to ensure that the town CPAC is allowed to function with intention as an advisory and participant in the process by having a seat on an anticipated subcommittee that should be appointed to support the execution of this audit. While it may take a few additional weeks of preparation to create an organized subcommittee, I believe it is worth it for long-term efficiency and to ensure that the audit is conducted with the necessary scope that all stakeholders wish to see. Ideally, with the town money that was granted from the ARPA fund being used, taxpayers should be a part of establishing the scope and ensuring full transparency through the process of an audit. As with all things, particularly when related to our children, it is best to do things correctly and fully the first time. The duties of the CPAC as assigned by the state include meeting regularly with the school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of a district's special education program. And we look forward to working with you in that assigned role. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to hearing continued further discussions regarding the special education audit in the future. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
And our next call in person is Meg O'Neil.
Hello?
Hi, is this Meg O'Neil?
This is.
Hi, this is Helen from the North Andover Public Schools, and you're here for public comment, you have two minutes.
Thank you Helen.
Thank you.
Good evening, I am, I am Megan O'Neil, and I live at 65 Russell Street. I am here tonight to make a public comment as a CPAC board member, an active parent of a child receiving services from the North Andover Special Education Program. I am grateful for all of the work that you have done, that you have all done to making sure that a special education audit happens. I look forward to the results and working together as a community to continue to provide strong special education services to all the children that need them in our town. I feel very strongly that a subcommittee should be appointed to the special education audit. This is something that might add a bit more time onto the process, but it also adds a layer of transparency and collaboration that many families in this town are seeking. As a board member of CPAC, it is also our desire and obligation to participate with school officials to evaluate special education programming. This would be a wonderful opportunity to do that. I am asking that you strongly consider what is best for the families in our district. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you Meg, you can hang up now. And our third person was Courtney, so there's a spot right there.
Hello, thanks for letting me talk. My name is Courtney Pham, and I live on 544 Foster Street. I'm here tonight as not only the head chair of NAC PAC, but also as a concerned parent of two children that are receiving special education services in North Andover. After the last school committee meeting, hearing parents talk about being in favor of special education audit, and went on behalf of our CPAC board where we also requested to have representative on the subcommittee, I thought surely we will see this on the agenda tonight, but disappointingly, it is not, so now I'm really at a loss. I know the special education audit is not the true issue. It is us asking to be on the subcommittee. Making a subcommittee does not take as much time as you all say it would. As a CPAC, we represent special needs families. If anyone should be on the subcommittee, it should be someone from our CPAC. Over the years, I'm very fortunate to have built a good relationship with Marcy Bakuzi. She has already expressed to be on board with the special education audit, and is actively pricing out companies for the audit. I know she can continue to make sure our children are getting free and appropriate public education. She multitasks and does a special education audit at the same time. Being on the school committee board, you all have a responsibility to make sure children are getting the best services needed by having a special education audit. This will help Marcy and her team to not only see how they are doing, but possibly improve where they never saw they needed it before. This will only help improve our programs even more, which is our goal. So my question to you is, what needs to happen in order for the special education audit to be on your agenda finally? And to also establish a subcommittee that would have a CPAC member on it as well? Sincerely, a mom who just wants the best for her only, her two children, not only for her two children, but for all the children receiving special education services in North Andover. Thank you.
Thank you, other, other, wanna state your name and address? Absolutely.
Good evening, my name is Sasha Weinrich, and I live at 21 Sawyer Road. I'm speaking as both the vice chair of the North Andover CPAC and a taxpaying citizen with a child in the school district. Last meeting, I thanked the school committee for agreeing to perform a special education audit for the district. I'm still grateful for that, that the audit was agreed to. Additionally, at the last meeting, the executive director of special education discussed her research regarding the special education audit, or as she prefers, the term "special education review." I greatly appreciate her research thus far and the work that she's doing. That being said, I continue to strongly urge the school committee to form a subcommittee to help facilitate the special education review. As was also mentioned at the last meeting, the consultants who perform the special education review could have various review scopes as decided by the district. Taxpayer dollars are being used to fund this review, and taxpayers should be involved in the creation of the review scope. It is critical for a subcommittee, not just the administration, to help facilitate this process. A subcommittee allows for a transparent process and involvement of all stakeholders in our community. I appreciate your time and your consideration, and I look forward to your response. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for a public comment? Okay, great. We will move on to our next item, which is consent items approval of minutes for November 3rd.
I move we accept the minutes as presented in the packet from November 3rd.
I second.
Second.
Is there discussion? I think Joe got it, sorry. And are we ready for a vote? Okay, we'll start with Mr. McDevitt, since you are remote.
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Fietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks, sorry?
Yes.
I will vote yes. And moving on to the student representatives report?
Okay, I was just gonna remind you about the Eagle Scout that we want to get out.
Yes, we'll do that, we'll have our student representatives, and then if it's okay with the rest of the board, we will move our agenda items around for our Eagle Scout.
Perfect.
Come on, great. Yeezy's got your own mic tonight.
Thank you, so my name is Nora Elkadiji, I'm a senior at North Andover High School. And before I get into what happens at the high school, I have permission from Dr. Gilligan to publicly thank him for jumping my car the other week. He stuck around for a long time, and it's been running smoothly ever since, so I wanted to thank you for that.
I will say, Nora, that it has been, a lot of people saying, "I saw you in the parking lot of the high school for like 45 minutes with these cables and a bunch of kids," and some won't even ask if it was a science experiment. It was not a traditional battery, so it did take all of us a little bit more.
No, I don't have to call AAA anyway.
No, but it's been working well ever since, so thankfully. And then also referencing our last meeting, the seniors did end up winning the Powderpuff game. And even though the freshman made it to the final round, we did end up winning. I think Mr. McDevitt asked me about that last meeting, right?
I did, yes.
And then as for what's happening in the high school, COVID test kits are now available for the families, I'm pretty sure they distributed them last Wednesday. Also, StuCo is doing Operation Donation, and I remember doing it with my classes last year, I thought it was very successful. People are very involved, they work together as a second period class, whatever it is, to raise money for a specific child, usually things like Christmas gifts, essentials, things like that. The Coffee House is tomorrow, and while I haven't been to one in a while, I hear they're usually very lively, very successful. And then the Spanish Club is selling bracelets during lunch, and all proceeds go to the original artists in Nicaragua. And then finally, what I'm most excited to talk about is how Ms. Zuewi and one other language teacher were selected by Professor Moss from Harvard Business School to participate in a case method project, and she's working with us, the Muslim Student Association, and the AP French Kids. And the objective of this case study is to just work on critical thinking and just applying skills like that in reading case studies involving American history and politics and things like that. So we're very excited to get to work with them and discussing the possibility of maybe attending one of Professor Moss's classes in the future, meeting with them. So I'm very excited to talk about that, thank you.
Hello everyone, my name is Ben Abbott, I'm a junior at the high school. There is a Special Education Parent Advisory Committee meeting on the 5th. The student council is also working with them in the future, which is very exciting. Winter sports at the high school have begun practicing this week. The Knights locker has been started at the high school, it is similar to the Knights locker at the middle school, which empowers students through collecting donations of clothes to make sure that kids have, have the clothes they need to attend classes and to, to perform at, at, at school. The student council teacher holiday cards has begun. The student council organizes its members to write handwritten holiday cards to each of the teachers at the high school. It's a very nice gesture, and it is my joy to announce that the middle school selected this year's Project 351 Ambassador. Now, Project 351 is a statewide organization that kind of cultivates emerging civic leaders. An eighth grader from every town in the state, 351 towns hence the name, is chosen to lead drives and lead civic engagement in their town. And this year's ambassador is Lila Lobal. So congratulations to her, and I'm very excited to start working with her. And that concludes our report for tonight.
Great, thank you. Do we have questions? Mr. McDevitt, do you have any questions for our students?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Ms. Picard?
None, thank you, perfect.
Ms. Fietzke?
No, thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
More of a comment?
Go for it.
I was excited to hear about Powderpuff, Nora. Fifty-one years ago in my hometown, our gym teacher challenged the across-town rival to a girls' Powderpuff football game, and it's now, it's still as big as the boys' football game, so it makes me happy to hear that her tradition lives on throughout New England, and congratulations on winning that, so.
Thank you. I remember playing in our Powderpuff game in high school 100 years ago, and it was so much fun, I love it. Okay, thank you so much, you guys all, as always, did such a great job. I'm always so impressed with how organized and well you present, so thank you so much. Thank you for having me. You are welcome to stay, and you are welcome to go. Okay, and so we are going to change our order of items and have our Eagle Scout come and present his project.
I would like to fully note before we get started, I'm not an Eagle Scout yet.
Sorry.
I am a Life Rank Scout, and when I finish a couple of things, including this project, I will have attained the rank of Eagle Scout.
I will, I will revise and say the Eagle Scout candidate? Or in training?
Candidate.
Candidate.
Thank you.
Correct.
I have a packet that includes various notes and such for regarding my project I'd like to pass around first before we get fully started. This is just some basic stuff such as dimension and scope of scale that goes into a little bit more detail than the bullet points on the presentation tonight. So my project is, as for right now, known as the Eagle Project for the North Andover High School Course, yeah, North Andover High School Course Room. Next slide please. Who am I? I am Finn Donnelly, I'm a current, I'm currently a high school senior at NAHS, and I'm a member of the National Honor Society at NAHS. Relating to Scouts, I'm a Life Rank Scout currently, and I'm a member of the Order of the Arrow, which is the National Honor Society for scouting itself, full of various scouts who exemplify scouting behavior. I'm also a violinist, this is important to this. Why do I want to do this project? Because I'm a fellow musician who has had no way to participate fully with North Andover, with the community within North Andover for music, and I want to give to the local music community in some way, in a positive way. Next slide please. Planning, what am I doing? My plan is as follows, the construction of a trophy shelf for the high school choir, the construction of two shelves and two pairs of music stand racks, the repainting of two choir practice rooms, and the installation of all constructed materials. The timetable for this, as I've estimated, is between four to six weeks, since I'm going to be primarily using weekends to work on this. The current state of the rooms are as shown. In one of them, the one full of music stands of the 96 square feet, that's usable space in there, there's roughly 30 that you can get around. And my project is based around making sure that trophies and such that are stored in these practice rooms currently are either moved out of the way or positioned in a way so that the practice rooms can be used fully. Material gathering, here comes the scope of it. Material gathering will include the collecting of donations of materials from local lumberyards and hardware stores such as local Home Depot or Rocky's Ace Hardware Store. I will also be collecting personal contributions to be used in extra materials. Say if I run out of lumber for a particular part of the project, I can just quickly run off to a store and get it using personal contributions, supplies such as food, water, et cetera, or a stockpile in preparation of any possible serious injury, because a scout is prepared. Next, I would be borrowing or renting needed tools from Troop 87 or elsewhere. To my knowledge, the only needed tools that I have right now are sawhorses. I, my family has all the rest of the tools that we'll be using, such as a circular saw, screws, sorry, a a powered screwdriver, powered drill, and et cetera, et cetera. Expenses will come out to be about $2,500. Funds will not have to be allocated from the town of North Andover or the school committee for this project, since it'll be entirely funded from other means. Next slide, ah, next slide, thank you. Construction, the major parts that I'd like to inform you about is the safety that we're going to be following. All safety precautions as outlined in Safe Project Tool Use and Age Appropriate Guidelines, which are the two scouting provided safety guidelines, will be followed. This is to ensure minimal injury, and also so that young, younger scouts don't handle the circular saw. This is kind of a thing to make sure that anything that can go wrong is minimized as much as possible. And also, all youth protection training rules enacted by the scouts will be followed as well. I want to also add that warmth, since we're going into a colder month, warmth in facilities will be provided no matter what. This is to ensure everyone has a safe environment and isn't freezing while they are outside working on shelves. At this point, I open to the committee to ask any questions.
Thank you, we'll start with.
I just wanted to add.
Yes.
So Finn has followed all the proper steps, he identified a need, he connected with Sarah Durkin to ensure that the music department felt that was a need. And then he reviewed the project with myself and Steve Foster, our facilities director, to ensure that what he was proposing didn't disturb anything or, or impact structural facilities. And we walked through, and we have no issues, we're in support of the project.
Great, thank you.
I would also like to note that Mr. Jackson was there as well.
And Principal Jackson, that's right.
Let's start with Mr. McDevitt, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a quick question, I know that there are, first of all, I think this is great. I think we should absolutely be showcasing the trophies and the awards that our music department has, but I'm just curious, we have some display cases that are kind of along Main Street, and I don't remember if any of them go down towards kind of the chorus and the band rooms, you know, along the sides of the auditorium, but I'm wondering if any of those have available space as well. If I remember correctly from seeing Ms. Durkin present, you, you have a massive amount of awards that could be showed.
Yes, so the, most of the trophies and awards are primarily plaques, but of the trophies, they cannot be showcased in those showcases because, as I've seen by walking by them almost every day, there is enough space for smaller things such as plaques. However, they don't have enough space vertically wise for trophies. And I am not 100% sure, but I'm fairly confident that they are currently being filled with various sports-related activity trophies.
Second part, Andrew, they're, they're only on Main Street, they don't extend off of the, off of Main Street. And Finn's absolutely right, the height would be too much for those display cases.
Okay. Nice, thank you.
Ms. Picard?
Yeah, this is really a question for Dr. Mealy. Finn, you've done a wonderful job, I spent seven years hanging around with Troop 87. I know that there's terrific work that happens there, and I really applaud the work that you are doing, and I'm excited about the project, for you and for the people that you work with, I hope you'll invite us. But Dr. Mealy, my question is, with the activities taking place on the weekend and stuff, I assume the custodians let folks in, and is there anybody to provide any assistance if there, if there were to be any kind of an emergency? Or, or does the troop provide the adult supervision, and how does that work?
There's actually a custodian in our high school on the weekends. There's often activities, but we also have a building check that they have to do, so there's always somebody there on the weekends, so there will be an adult.
Ms. Fietzke?
Yeah, I just have a question, I know you sort of explained it, but I didn't quite get it. Why, why are the practice rooms currently, are they unusable or not usable enough?
They are currently usable, however, there is a heavy amount of clutter. If we go back to the fourth slide, we are able to see that the room on the left has, as I measured out, about 96 square feet of usable room in, in total. And most of that is being blocked off by music stands, by chairs, by stuff that's just blocking off most of the usable room. So in reality, most of the usable room is just a chair that's right by the piano and the piano.
So would you be, you wouldn't be doing construction in that room? Are you just kind of tidying it up or moving things around, or, I know you're painting, but?
What it would be doing is providing a new home for these racks. Instead of having them sprawl out all across the room, they would be hung on hooks on, in one of the corners to ensure that people can fully use the room to the best of the ability.
Thank you, good job. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you, Finn, great job, I really love the scope of the project, and, and I love that we have so much hardware that we don't know where to put it, and that it's so big, that's great. So thank you to the music department for that. Finn, so if I'm understanding correctly, you would, you're not doing all, all the work by yourself, but you'll be leading other kiddos in doing the work and guiding them?
That is fundamentally what an Eagle Scout project is, yes. The Eagle Scout project is all about the Eagle Scout candidates leading a major project that would help out not the troop or himself or themselves, but rather a community at large. And the biggest thing about this as outlined in the workbook many, many, many times is how will you be a leader throughout this? How have you shown leadership skills through the planning of this? How do you plan on being a leader throughout this? How did, was your leadership throughout the project? The main focus is you as a leader.
So how many other kids and scouts and others do you think you'll need to get this done in the timeline that you hope it happens?
Yeah, like when do you turn 18?
Yeah, that, that was my last question, when do you turn?
Oh, sorry.
When do you turn 18? What's your due date here?
I turn 18 August 15th of next year. So I, I do have time. Yes, I, I'll be technically graduated before I turn 18. However, for the number of people that I theorize that I will need, I'll most likely need six to eight youth. As I said, six Y, it doesn't allow enough space in that little segment where it says how many people for youth and then also adults. And also two adults to ensure that the youth protection training is followed wholeheartedly, along with making sure that there's people who can actually use the saw instead of just me.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you for asking those two questions.
You actually took my questions? It's the strife of going last. No, I think you're really well-prepared, and it, it sounds like, and it seems like you're going to be a really great leader. Being prepared is half the battle right there. And do you have an age requirement for? And um, do you have a, an age requirement for the um helpers that you will have?
Technically, no.
Okay.
Uh, I say technically because this includes parts uh that range in variety. So within scouting BSA, there's age limits to certain tools. Uh, for power tools, you have to be sixteen or an older scout or up in order to use it. Uh, for removable saw, you'll also have to be sixteen or up or eighteen and up. There's age requirements for each tool itself, that's why I say technically all are accepted.
Sure.
Uh, because I will be including painting in this. And painting is a fairly simple and routine endeavor that's, all scouts are welcome to participate in, all volunteers are for, welcome to participate in it.
Great, thank you. Um, do we have other questions? Okay.
Do we need to vote or say?
Yeah, we, are you looking for a vote tonight?
Uh, I was looking for a vote of whether or not I can do this or not, since that was what I was, since that is what I was.
So it's, it, it is listed as a first read, can we suspend the rules?
I move we suspend the rules um to consider the Eagle Scout project.
Second.
And then um we will vote on suspending the rules, I'm getting there. Mr. McDevitt?
So there was a second on that?
Yes, it was Ms. Fietzke.
Okay, so uh vote on suspending the rules is a no.
Okay, um, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Fietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Um, okay, so we've suspended the rules and now can we vote, cause we've just asked it, asked all our questions? Or do we need to have discussion?
So either we approve the Eagle Scout project as presented by Finn Donnelly.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Okay, and so do we need discussion? We've just had a pretty good discussion, do we have other thoughts or questions before we vote? Great, we'll start with um Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Fietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, you are approved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for having you all having to uh suspend the rules.
Don't apologize for that, we're happy to do it, that's great. Yep.
Again, thank you.
You're welcome, good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, so I think we are ready for the superintendent's report?
Uh, certainly. Uh, so I've got a few things listed tonight and a couple others, um, not here, but first and foremost, um, we have the MAST Teacher of the Year, uh, M-A-S-T, and that's the Mass Association, Massachusetts Association of School, of Science Teachers. Uh, so this is the Educator of the Year Award and it's for Essex County, and I wanted to recognize Mr. Craig Richard, he's a uh science teacher at the north end of a middle school. He was actually gonna come tonight and talk a little bit about this, but he's at a MAST meeting tonight um for science. Um, and so this is quite something, I mean, it seems like probably our middle school's been getting a lot of attention this fall with the school committee, but there's been remarkable things with Ms. Lapierre and the civics led proj, in the project to exonerate the last witch. Uh, Mr. McGravy, as you guys know, in last time in those presentations were remarkable. Uh, I was sharing it with my superintendent's group and um it, when we talk about student voice and agency, that was really outstanding. Um, and really to honor him tonight, um, he couldn't be here, but uh he wanted me to share a quote. So he's very humble, he does a great job for us, he has for a lot of years, and he wanted to share, which is in your packet, but uh Mr. Richard said, "I'd like to thank my students past and present for an amazing twenty years. Everyone has something to teach and what I've learned from my students has made me a better teacher and a better person. I share this award with you, my favorite teachers as well." So, um, exciting for him and um I'm sure the awards will keep coming in, cause we've been on a roll this year with different awards.
Fun fact, Mr. Richards and I were uh in an improv class at Northern Essex twenty-three years ago.
Oh, it'll be a fly on the wall, I'm sure. Interesting, all right. Uh, tonight, uh, we started a longstanding program where um, you know, oftentimes we'll go out, um, to places that will have us to do community outreach, and we've had a longstanding after-school program at Woodridge. Um, Ms. Marsh, do you want to talk a little bit about uh the program you and I just came from tonight and were, um, got back from?
So we have um, in the past, offered after-school tutoring and support for students at Woodridge, can you hear me? Um, so, so, so um, a number of the students who um are living at Woodridge attend the Atkinson School, and Atkinson School is one of our Title One schools, so we offer support through that. So we actually have a retired teacher from North Andover who's doing the tutoring this year, which is fabulous. Um, so we often, we haven't done it since COVID, but prior to that, Dr. Gilligan and I would go up to Woodridge in the fall and bring our after-school tutor. Um, sometimes we brought some community agencies and we would invite parents and students to come in just to talk about the services that we offer to try and encourage students to participate in the after-school homework support. So we did that this evening prior to the school committee meeting, and it was really a lot of fun. I think we had a better turnout than we have ever had even pre-COVID. We had a lot of families come, a lot of students come, we had our two bilingual parent liaisons there, we had our after-school tutor there, we had one of our reading interventionists from um Atkinson School, and we had our principal, um, Principal O'Loughlin from um Atkinson there as well, and then obviously Dr. Gilligan and I. So it was, it was a lot of fun, we had um Rob Johnson who runs the community programs there, we have a very good relationship. Um, he brought pizzas, we brought drinks and some raffle prizes. Um, the reading interventionist brought packets, bags of free books for students and also um a packet of guidelines for um how you could support your child um in reading at home. So it was, it was a really fun night, so it was, it was good to see. Nice to be able to do that again, so. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been a terrific program, I think there's not a lot of places in town where you have a, a space available, uh, like the Frank Brennan Recreation Center uh of room they have at Woodridge. And um we started doing this back in, I think, two thousand eight, slowed down a little bit with COVID, but uh it's a longstanding program, it's an outstanding program, and it was really great. Um, the outreach by the parent liaisons have made a difference. You know, a lot of years um it would have kids come down for the, for the uh dinner, but their parents might not come because they'd be like, oh boy, I, I'd probably do the same. It's dinner time, like the kids can go eat, um, you know, I might have something to do. Uh, but they did a really good job communicating, we had a lot more parents than we've ever had, um, so really tremendous uh turnout and it was, it's just a lot of fun. And it's great that there's the opportunity that they have that help there, I mean, there's different places around the community, you know, the youth center does a great job after school, and this is another place. And I can't thank Rob Johnson from Woodridge enough.
Do students have to live at Woodridge to take advantage of the tutoring?
There they do, yes, in that particular program. We have in the past done some things at Thompson, we, Greg and I have been to Royal Crest, um, not in recent years because their management and their structure has changed, they haven't been as open, but we have um done some outreach in other places as well and provided opportunities in other places. So we're getting going again after COVID, um, that's something that we'll assess as we move forward. Some, um, Woodridge is where we have the highest percentage of population and the, the um likelihood for participation.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it was a neat night, and I saw a couple of my former high school history students that I had in class, now with kids in our school, so um, that was really cool. Um, it was terrific today to meet with the PTO presidents, I meet with them every month, um, really great meeting. Um, we had a representative from the enrichment council come in, uh, the north end of enrichment council and talk uh a little bit about programming and um she did a great job, Courtney, and I want to say her last name because I always, it's a tough one, uh, La, LaFabazzelo, um, I think I got that sort of right. Um, but she's tremendous, you know, they're looking for volunteers, we're gonna put something in our newsletter, the PTO presidents will send something out, you know, they have, it, it's a program where they bring enrichment to all of our elementary schools across all, you know, the schools. Uh, great programming, uh, but they need volunteers and some body help, you know, people to help coordinate the schools, so um, exciting to meet with them today. Um, I'm, uh, unfortunately, we did, um, we had a great turnout at um the Thanksgiving Day football game. Um, it was really exciting to see um the chorus sing, and they brought, they do something cool, they bring back the alumni from the chorus uh to sing, and Ms. Durkin leads them in the National Anthem, and it was remarkable. Um, we had the marching band, um, who's been straight out, I mean, they have been at every event, uh, from the Thanksgiving Day football game performing, to the Veterans Day Parade, to the Thompson Salutes Veterans, so um they were performing, it was really good, North End of a Chair and North End of Football. We had beaten Andover in football the last two years, and they really um got the better of us this time around, so, um, but just.
Alumni band also comes to that game.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Huh, all right. Um, it was just really cool and it was a great crowd, um, so exciting and great to see all those folks there. Um, and additionally, uh, one other item for tonight, I had, um, we have um a couple exciting things coming up, um, and we'll have more information, but we'll have the Alumni Luncheon, uh, is an annual event, uh, right before winter recess, uh, college students come back, um, and our guidance puts it on, I was gonna, I almost just said Mr. Nugent, but it's not Mr. Nugent, it's Ms. Pinkston. Um, and they talk about their college experience and get a chance to meet with our seniors, uh, and a really great event put on the north end of a guidance department and um parent volunteers over there, um, so that's fun. Um, and that is what I have uh right now tonight and uh superintendent's update.
Great, thank you, okay, so we are on to the Chair's report, that's me. Um, so I just have a few updates, um, the teachers and the teachers' assistants have both officially requested to bargain, so that process has started. Um, and we're looking forward to continuing with the great communication and collaboration that we've always had with both unions. Um, and that really is something that's special and um I feel like needs to be recognized because it's not that way in all districts, and it really is special, so. Um, let's see, I also wanted to just take a moment to review about communication and the way that it works with uh between um the members and teachers and um our community members. Um, and so I think that sometimes it gets confusing and overwhelming, and I just wanted to take a moment so that um community member, community members don't feel like they have to rely on social media to go to um find out information, because as we all know, social media isn't always the most accurate and things can be misinterpreted and shared in misinterpreted ways without any malintent, it's just how it kind of works. Um, so the really, the easiest way to communicate if you have a question or a concern about your child is to contact your child's teacher. Um, I've been a parent of this district since two thousand eight, and I have never not had a response when I have asked a question about um something going on with my child or something going on with the school. Um, oftentimes you can be referred to guidance or a principal, um, but the quick and easiest way to get in touch with or to get, have a question answered is to get in touch with your child's teacher. Sometimes from there you need to move on, ask the principal if there's a, a school-wide question, um, or if there's some things pertaining to the district. Um, I encourage you to not go to social media, but to come to the district. We have administrators and we all here have public emails, um, and we try to do a pretty good job of communicating back and forth with specific questions as best as we can or get you in touch with the right person. Um, I know that I have a couple of emails that came in late this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to respond to them yet, um, as they just came in and there wasn't enough time. Um, so with that, I know that in years past, uh, the committee has had like coffee hour, uh, coffee chats or office hours, um, and I've been chatting with some of the other members and thinking that um maybe we should try to start that again. Last year we didn't do it, but we did have all of those meetings at the other schools for um, you know, the Kittredge and the um Facilities Master Plan Two updates. Um, and so I was thinking that after the holidays, um, we'll get, try to get that started again, whether it's a coffee hour or a office hour or whatever it needs to be. Um, not sure about the, like how frequent they'll be yet, um, and it's my understanding that in the past, they've not been well-attended, um, but let's.
During COVID, they were exceedingly well-attended, we did them online.
Virtually, so perhaps virtually is the way to go. Um, and so we can figure that out as we get closer to the new year, and hopefully we'll get some, um, some good attendance and some real, you know, because we're all here to help our community and to be part of our community and make our community and our schools better in any way that we can, and so I think that that's a really um easy way to get, to have those conversations, to get those things started. Um, and then I would like to um just quickly update, the special education review is, as I understand, under, like we are in a process, um, it is not going to include a subcommittee, we've had that as a, we've decided that as a, as a committee. Um, but the CPAC will definitely have a part in the review and will be, have their, have your opportunity to um share and, and voice your concerns when the process is happening. And so that is what I have, did you want to quickly update at all about the review or where we are in the process?
Uh, sure, I, um.
Which is off of our agenda, but.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to, I had a meeting this week with um an agency called Seaside Consulting, um, they're the ones that I spoke about at our last meeting that.
Can you use the microphone, please?
They're the ones that I spoke about, um, Seaside Consulting was the, um, consulting agency that I spoke about last meeting, um, that have consultants who were part of our original Walker Review. So two out of the three consultants that worked for Seaside were part of that two thousand eleven original Walker Review, um, which is posted, um, which we have access to still. Um, so what I, our meeting was about was just in general what we were looking for in the review process, and we spoke about um some of the pieces that I was looking for was to look at the referral process, patterns, inclusion, pull-out services, um, the current status of the department, organizational structure, program and service offerings, roles and responsibilities, um, utilization of current professional development, strengths, weaknesses, programmatic needs, um, procedural, um, looking at our procedural practices, over identification, under identification, so a wide variety of topics um that we discussed. So I am anticipating um some more information from them, um, and that we'll review and get back to them. So, and they are available to start first of the year.
Wow.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just um would want to reiterate as well that with regards to social media, because of the open meeting law, we really can't comment as school committee members on, on anything because if Joe comments, I comment and Holly comments, now we've got an open meeting law violation. So, you know, if, I have at times heard people say, you know, school committee never says anything and I know they're looking at this, I know they're in this group or whatever. That's why we don't say anything, cause we want to stay within the law and our responsibilities and our roles.
Thank you for that clarification.
And commenting includes likes and hearts and emojis and all of those as well.
Right, thank you for that clarification.
And it also might be worth pointing out, um, for people who are new, that it's been our policy as a committee that only the chair responds to emails that come to us as a group.
Yes, and I do try to respond to all of the emails within a, you know, reasonable timeframe. Thank you. Other things I missed? This is why we're a committee.
Not related to that, but we should probably bring up the December fifteenth meeting.
Thank you. Right, so we have a combined meeting on December fourteenth with, is that the tri-board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's all of them. Um, and so we had scheduled, um, we had had a scheduled meeting for the fifteenth, um, I'm unavailable that evening, but we also are meeting on the fourteenth with the tri-board, so we were thinking that would serve as our meeting, our next meeting, if that works.
So we have not suspended the rules for the Eagle Scout tonight, we would not have been able to get to that until January.
Oh, that's a really good point. Good thinking, yes. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, uh, moving on to old business, we have an MSBA Kittredge update.
Yeah, these will be quick.
Um, we are on schedule, uh, if you recall, they had given us eight deliverables um in order to qualify to go to the next phase. Um, we have now met the four, uh, the first four, uh, by giving them the educational profile questionnaire and the enrollment projections. Uh, they was, those were due on November thirtieth, and they've confirmed receipt of those prior to the thirtieth, so we're all set. The next two are due February twenty-eighth. So, and they're not heavy lifts, so we're right on track with regards to MSBA in the process. And then capital improvement plan update, I just wanted to let you know that uh part of the process is the town manager meets with all the departments to review them and determine which of the ones that have been submitted are going forward to town meeting. Um, all of our requests will be going forward as we've requested them with the change that we asked of combining um paving, drainage and exterior into one account. So, that's the update.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is there, is there anything about the NAMs project that, that we should know?
Is there, is there anything about the NAMs project that, that we should know about?
So, we have, we met, we had a staff meeting for them to provide feedback. They have another opportunity because there's a project team made up of middle school staff that teachers can also provide feedback to. They'll be working on how they want the building to operate once the project is done. Originally, we had talked about having the new addition be a science wing, but they've already decided that what they prefer, they, they want to keep the grades in their own specific areas. And so the science ones would be spread out so that that happens. And now they're trying to decide what's the best use of the additional space and there certainly needs to be met. And that team will, based on feedback from staff and their own deliberations, will provide that information to the architect. We had the initial OPM meeting. Colliers is the op, the owner's project manager. We met with them this, earlier this week and the first school building committee will be, I think it's either next week or the week after, but it's coming up quickly.
Wednesday the 7th.
7th, next week, yep.
Have those posted meetings?
Yes, they are.
That was just scheduled. They haven't officially posted that one yet.
But it will be.
But it will be.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. McDevitt, do you have any questions?
Just a quick question. So if they were to keep the sciences, and I'm thinking kind of the sixth grade is a little bit more separate from, from the rest. But they, as part of the renovation, they would be redoing those classrooms to make sure that they were, you know, up, up to all the 21st century learning capabilities and technology and all of that fun stuff, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to thank the middle school staff for coming on. I know there were 10 public forums and a lot of participation in the survey last year. But it was terrific to get a member, a teaching member of the staff on the MSBA school, I mean, not the MSBA, the School Building Committee, sorry. We talk so much about Kittredge. And it's really terrific that they have a working team over there, you know, gathering input to really help as we build this, what's going to work best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, moving on to new business, item A, we have food services, food services presentation, which is informational.
So I'm here tonight to share with you some updated information regarding our food services department. I wanted to start with sharing some, what I think, some very impressive numbers for the North Andover community, since we've had universal free meals for the last couple of years. You sure can?
Yeah. She jumped right in. I wanted to introduce her and Erica did, did what I usually do, which is didn't introduce herself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do that all the time, but I'm going to do it.
Okay.
So, I say this every chance I get about all of our directors and I will say it again tonight. We have an excellent, excellent food services director, does a tremendous job. Erica is one of the best and as a result of doing such a great job and the reimbursement we've been getting over the last few years because of COVID, we've gone from just making it each year.
Yes.
To having surplus funds. And so, the presentation tonight is kind of focused on what Erica is doing with some of those surplus funds and some possible plans to use those funds as well. Because it's never been a problem before, but while they, we've always been trying to get to the point where you have three months of expenses as your reserves. Now we've gone past that and they don't want you to have any more than that, so they want you to put those funds back into the program. So with that.
My name is Erica Murphy. I'm Director of Nutrition. And I'm here to share with you what I think are some impressive numbers due to universal free meals for the North Andover community. Many of you may have heard at the end of the summer, it was touch and go as to whether or not Massachusetts would fund universal free meals. So fortunately, we have quite a few advocates for free meals. Christina Manicucci, one of them, who I was fortunate to work with and she really worked hard to help Massachusetts get this passed. So not every state did and we feel very fortunate. So, numbers don't lie. Looking at numbers today versus December 1st of last year, looking at like the Sargent, their current participation for lunch is 90%. Their breakfast is 30, 38%. Last year, not every school provided breakfast. I was fortunate to discuss with the principals, the importance of breakfast every morning. And all of the elementary schools now follow the second chance breakfast model. So, once the kids get to school, they get settled in their classroom and then we deliver breakfast to their classes and they eat during attendance and so on and so forth, so. Prior to COVID, our overall participation was anywhere between 42 and 45%. So now we're servicing about 77%, 3,300 lunches a day anyways. And those students who aren't purchasing lunch are typically high school and middle school students who are purchasing à la carte foods. So, a lot of meals going out. So, some of the things that I worked on over the summer was how can I improve communication while the kids are in the classroom? I purchased 18 55-inch displays. The high school has six, the middle school has five and each elementary school in ECC has one. It is a video loop of nutrition information, what's on the menu for the day. That second slide is a, I do a daily fun fact and yesterday's was all about snow. Snow is not white, it's translucent and the kids get a kick out of it because they can eat lunch, talk to their friends and talk about fun facts. So it does change every day, so I have a lot of fun doing it. We also launched a new fresh fruit and vegetable bar at the high school. So, this is an opportunity for any student, whether they buy a full lunch or not, to come up to the fresh fruit and vegetable bar and get whatever it is that they want. It's all seasonal, it's cut fresh every day. I've procured probably one of the best produce vendors that delivers to us every couple, couple of days. And I was worried about it, but it has since become the most popular line. Every student that pretty much gets any meal, pizza, sub, they kind of shimmy their way over to the fruit, fresh fruit and vegetable line and will have like a daily fruit and vegetable of the day and most kids will be willing to try it. So, it's, it's a great, it's been a great addition to the high school. One other thing that we worked on over the summer was doing more scratch cooking and providing more clean foods for the kids to eat. You could see that we purchased a rotisserie. It holds 16 wogs, as they call it, chickens. And it's, it's served daily, the kids love it. And they can smell it cooking and it again is probably one of our more popular lines. We also vamped up our salad bar. You can see the chicken, it's grilled, it's nothing processed. We grill it right there, it's all made to order, cut right there and then put on their salads. And one project that I have in progress is I currently have five farm stands being built. So very similar to this and where you see farmer's market, it's going to say Franklin School Farm Stand, Kittredge School Farm Stand. So one day a week, I have an employee going over and they will stock that farm stand with all fresh fruits and vegetables. The kids won't come up and get it because I think it'll be too confusing, but we're going to have portioned out containers for one of my employees to go around to each of the tables to ask the students if they'd like to try it. We have, the Massachusetts Farm to School Association provides us with like trading cards from local farmers. So we hand it out based on what the seasonal fruit is for that month. And the kids seem to really like it. It has a lot of fun facts on there. Another project in the works is a preorder system at the high school and then we'll be rolling it out at the middle. There's, they're creating an app for us where students can go on and customize a cold sandwich, hot sandwich, salad, just by adding à la carte items to their cart, checking out. And then we have a takeout line where the kids just come up, say their name, and we hand them their lunch and then off they go. So help with the, the length of the lines. And then a possible project, I happened to get an email from a company called Ingenious, Ingenious Associates. And I just thought, I said, hey, let me think, let me see what they can do. And he called, he actually took a trip up to here, North Andover, and took some measurements of the cafeterias and came up with a design for a renovation for both school cafeterias. Very similar to like college setting where you see a lot of graphics, a lot of the school logos and mascots. All of the tables are different. There's some high tops, there's some booths and some other really neat like recycling stations. So, we're in the very early stages of entertaining this possibility. But I, I think it would be a great endeavor if in fact we could make it come to fruition.
Yeah, we like the idea that it's less institutional looking, feeling, different seating options, so encourages different groupings. So, we'll look more into it and it'll come to you for final approval.
Right.
Whatever our recommendation is. That's it, right?
That's it.
We have questions. Mr. McDevitt, do you have any questions for Ms. Murphy? Sorry, do you want me to come back to you?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Picard, do you have any questions? Ms. Picard?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're giving, we're giving Mr. McDevitt a minute.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
This is great. I mean, your presentation is great, but really, your presentation of food is great.
Thank you.
We know that everyone, and kids especially, will really dive into those fresh fruits and vegetables when they're well presented. So those salad bars, those, you know, those fresh fruit bars, they make a huge difference. The farm stand thing, that's going to make a huge difference to kids. And trying things with your peers, you know, also makes a huge difference to lifelong nutrition. So I just, I'm so excited and I've said in your absence, and I'll say in your presence, I'm so thankful for the work you did with our state legislature.
Thank you.
Giving Christina what she needed to be able to take forward and, you know, it's benefited obviously North Andover, but it's benefited kids all over the Commonwealth. And I, you know, I've been so privileged to sit in meetings with you for the last few years and I just am so excited about what you're doing and how you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Ms. McDevitt, are you ready? Or do you need another minute?
I'm a little bit back, thank you. First of all, Erica, thank you very much. I really appreciate all the kind of interesting things that you presented today. You know, I think Ms. Picard, you know, said it, you know, in terms of, you know, just over the past two years, you know, meals that you and your team helped facilitate for the community, absolutely fantastic. I like, you know, the thought process of reviewing some or revising some things at the high school and the middle school conceivably in terms of just kind of making that a little bit more student centric. I think that that, you know, definitely has a, an opportunity for it to be uplifted. I love the creativity in some of the meals at the high school and the fresh fruits and some of those options in terms of subs and sandwiches and things of that nature. I am curious though, you know, again, thank you for doing the, I think you called it a fresh start breakfast or a late start breakfast?
Breakfast after the bell.
Say it again?
Breakfast after the bell.
Breakfast after the bell, yes. So I'm just curious with that, you know, you've got some amazing fruit and nutritional kind of options that are there. What are the options that are provided to, to those students after the bell?
It's, a breakfast consists of a whole grain product, a seasonal fruit and a milk. So it's three components to a breakfast. So it's typically like a whole grain muffin, a whole grain bagel. It can be a cereal, though it's not, we don't serve it so that they can eat it in the classroom because we don't want to have, you know, the milk. We're very selective about what we send to the classrooms.
I'm sure the teachers are appreciative.
They are. We have to really think those through.
Yep. So, I mean, I, I'm encouraged as well by, you know, bringing that fresh fruit back down, you know, into the elementary schools and kind of continuing that all the way through. So I'm anxious to see that kind of start up, I guess, after first of the year and try to get more fruits and vegetables out there. And I think you've said it before, but, you know, the more opportunities that they have to try something.
Absolutely.
Is, is the opportunity they have to actually realize that they like it. So, the variety is certainly key and thanks for being creative in that.
Thank you.
Ms. Fietzke?
No questions, this is outstanding.
Thank you.
I love it.
Thank you.
I love everything in it and Helen said everything I would have said too.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you so much. As a parent of a fifth grader who's a vegetarian, thank you for making sure there is vegetarian options every day.
Every day, yes.
He appreciates that very much, even though he sometimes struggles to eat those too, but I still appreciate them being available. So, I love all the things. My, my question is about capacity going forward as we enter budget season. Just forecasting a little, if we're unable to convince the legislature again to fund breakfast, lunch for everybody, what would that cost us to do anyway? Just, I like, what, I like, not that we, as I, like, what would that be? And is our ability to do the fresh fruit stand and the farm stands contingent upon that type of funding? Or would we be able to continue to do those programs regardless?
I think we'd be able to do those programs regardless because we would budget for those.
Yep.
We have the additional funding right now and we create a, you know, a budget so that we could make sure that we continue to do those.
But doing free lunch would be a large amount, like.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
If we were to continue doing free lunch next year, if, in the district, if the legislature did not continue to.
Oh, would we be able to do free lunch?
Yeah.
If, if Massachusetts didn't approve it or the federal, so we would have to go back to paid free and reduced meals. Yep. We don't have the option of just saying, well, North Andover is going to provide free meals universal. We would have to get away from the federal reimbursement, we'd have to fund ourselves.
Got it.
And we've actually entertained that years ago and it wasn't to our advantage to do that. We would have to increase lunch prices to cover the federal reimbursement that we typically get.
Are any of our schools eligible for community present, uh, community eligibility?
Atkinson was, they are not currently now. However, because of their eligibility, we are now still able to run the summer food service program for five years. So last year was year three. So we have another two years based on Atkinson's eligibility three years ago. I think the redistricting changed some of the free and reduced rates per school. Thank you.
Mr. McDevitt has another question. Were you?
Also, the online ordering system is fantastic. Thank you for having that available at the beginning of the month for the whole month.
Thank you.
And I guess it's just like, this is not about you and the amazing job you're doing, but like if we can somehow continue to advocate at the, at the next level above to be able to make sure that kids have lunch and breakfast available regardless, that would be great, so.
Absolutely.
Great. Ms. McDevitt?
So thanks for asking that question, Mr. Hicks, in terms of just, you know, if we didn't have the state actually fund our lunches or our meal program. There are some communities, I know for example Lowell, where they do provide free meals. Is that because of a different federal grant as opposed to a state? And Erica, if you don't know right now, that's absolutely fine. If you did know, I'd.
I'm assuming that.
I'd be more impressed than I already usually am, so.
I'm sure they're eligible based on their percentage of free meals or free eligible students. Similar to like some of the other school districts, if there's a certain percentage, over 60%, typically qualifies for what's called universal free meals. We're, we're not, we're, we're at about 42%. However, the direct certification does even after, you know, all this time after COVID, our direct certification numbers still continue to increase.
Okay.
That was the question that I was asking about CEP.
And I'm just wondering, like.
And I'm just wondering, like, as kind of springboarding off of these types of questions, because, you know, as you were going through your presentation, I was thinking COVID was awful, but the funding that's come through because of it is kind of like that silver lining to what we've all been through, right? Especially where it comes to food. And I wonder what kind of data we can collect to have in our back pocket to continue to advocate for universal free lunch? Because I think that there's a lot of, there's, there's so much good that people aren't even thinking of putting, making everybody even and taking that, making it completely equitable and taking that stress away from some families and some children.
Well, that's what I do.
Yeah.
Almost monthly, I reach out to our state legislators, share all these numbers specifically for North Andover, so that they see this community has really taken advantage of the universal meals, so.
Thank you for that. I mean, really, this is awesome. The fresh fruit and the, all the options. I just have one quick question, and you don't have to answer this now. The ESL teacher in me was looking at your screens and wondering if there's an opportunity to post some translation on your screens for our students who are speakers of other languages and how they might just kind of walk by and say, oh, hey, I can read that, you know, if they're if we have, I don't know how many newcomers we have in the district, but that's just the ESL teacher in me, and I just, I had to say it.
Yeah.
But I'd love that, that's, it's such a great use of our, of our resources for these kiddos. It's awesome. Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you.
Two more things.
Yes.
One, I can tell you in going to meetings with assistant superintendents for finance and operations and business managers, that it's a top priority. They're always advocating.
Good.
Looking to the legislator and whoever we have advocating. All the districts are, have it as a high priority. And then Ms. Picard had asked at the last meeting about the community meals. And I mentioned that to Erica, and she does have an answer. They stopped.
We did. So we just had very low participation. And Desi did not approve the community, the area eligible waiver. So it didn't extend after June 30th. So they no longer allowed for us to have like grab and go meal distribution lines. So we did service Woodbridge over the summer, and we qualified as an open site. So we did not just service Woodbridge, we serviced the entire state of Massachusetts. So we didn't know where everybody came from, but Project Bread shares our location as an open site, and anybody and everybody can come.
You can't see, but I'm open mouthed.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Did you have a lot of participation?
We did, yeah, we did. And the one good thing is they, they did extend the waiver where they didn't, A, have to eat on site, and B, a parent or household member could pick on, pick up on behalf of a student. And you can't ask any questions. It's how many are in your, how many kids are in your family? So it was great. So I think because of that, we had an even bigger turnout.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Making sure we have no other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of wanted to clap. Yes, we'll do a silent cheer. Okay, so we have already completed our new business, item B. And so I will go back to, we have our next item agenda, which is public comment. And we still have public here at the end of the meeting, which is unusual. Is there anybody would like to speak publicly?
My name is Sasha Weirich. I live at 21 Sawyer Road. Thank you for this really great meeting tonight. I want to thank Chair Petrowski for addressing the public comments that we've had for the last couple of weeks. When you stated that a subcommittee will not be formed as part of facilitating the special education review, you also stated that that was decided by the committee. And I'd just like some clarification on when that was discussed and decided, please.
So this is public comment and not discussion?
So
I can
I will rephrase that, I obviously wasn't prepared for that.
It's okay.
But my, my, that would be something I would, I would be interested in hearing about. Thank you very much.
My name is Courtney Pham, 544 Foster Street. I am disappointed in you guys. Highly disappointed that there will be not a subcommittee. I rave about you all. I am proud that our CPAC has a good relationship with you guys, school administration and everyone. I am disappointed that there is no subcommittee for the special education audit. Thank you.
Okay, do we have member comment? Mr. McDevitt?
Not tonight.
Ms. Picard?
None, thank you.
Ms. Fietzke?
No comments.
Mr. Hicks?
Uh, yes. So to start, I'd like to say on the record that I was very sorry to miss our last public meeting on the 17th. I watched back the meeting. I was happy to see everyone adorned in the yellow CPAC shirts. I'm the pre-K to 12-plus humanities curriculum coordinator in Holliston. And as part of my professional responsibilities, I was presenting at that school committee on that night. I want to start by thanking the individuals who shared their thoughts that night during public comments regarding the special ed review. My own child has an IEP, and I recognize the difficult nature of navigating the SPED system and the frustration that may have us face as we advocate for what's best for our kiddos. I echo many of the thoughts that everyone spoke about. My child has had amazing teachers, and I'm happy that he is making progress and becoming a more confident reader. Mrs. DeFrayer has done a wonderful job supporting him in his learning. Mrs. Conley has helped him to learn how to regulate his emotions and be able to stay focused and productive in the classroom. And Mrs. Bayless, Ms. Amison, and Mrs. Good have all found ways to support his weaknesses while also celebrating his strengths. And, and I think it's a really important word that we use right now is "and", because the world is not always so straightforward. We live in a very complex reality, sorry. We need to look out, look at all of our services and all of our programming to make sure it's the best we can do. And I'm happy that the administration is willing to undertake this work and that it has the support of the school committee. And I believe we should make this a different process than what has been done in the past. This isn't a regular program review. This should be different, and I think it needs a more deliberate and focused process that is open and even more transparent to the community. And yes, people can always make a records request, and we have an obligation to fulfill those requests. However, being transparent doesn't have to wait for that to happen. We can center ourselves in this process and transparency and openness and collaboration. I believe that a special committee, a subcommittee would allow us to engage in that with our families and our community in this deliberate and focused process and continue to build trust and, which is, in terms of communication, is one of our own goals for this year. So I think the best forward route for us is to use funding, if we can, through ARPA. I know we have more circuit breaking money coming in, but we can also use that for other things. So let's use what we can to make sure that happens. I'm glad that's already scheduled to happen. But I still, I would, I, I'm sad that the process has already closed and the decision has been made because I don't think, I didn't make that decision, which is frustrating to me as a member of the committee. So I still think we need to apply to town for our funds for the special ed review, and that we should include creating a subcommittee that includes members of the community, members of CPAC, and other members of the administration whose purpose is to establish the scope, review the reports created by the team of reviewers, and make recommendations back to this committee as a whole. We have an opportunity to learn about ourselves, that we can improve our district and plan for what comes next. And I would like to see this committee, I challenge this committee, to seize on that opportunity because it is what will be best for our kids. Thank you.
And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And we will vote. Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Fietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And that concludes our meeting at 8:19. One minute above. Thank you.